Good evening, everyone. We're going to, I'm going to call the meeting to an order at 7:00 PM on January 28th. The first item on our agenda is a joint meeting with the Board of Trustees in the Oxford Free Public Library. We are going to discuss the trustee vacancy, please.
Please. Good morning, or not morning, good evening.
Good evening.
Yes, my afternoon meant more than I thought.
Thank you.
Madam Town Manager, members of the board, my name is John Bowles. I'm a member of the Library Trustees. Carol Steiner is another member of the Board of Trustees. Brittany McDougall is our librarian, and this is Mr. Harry Williams.
Good evening.
Do you have a phone?
Yes.
Do you have a phone? Yes, we do. There are only three members usually, so two of us are here, so we're good. This is the first joint meeting that I can remember ever having, so I'm very honored. I actually wore a tie. If I may, I'm sure you are aware that one of our members, Mr. Jack Flynn, has attended his resignation. After being a resident of the town of Oxford for over 50 years, he has moved out of town. And so that has created the vacancy that he was reluctant to leave. And we're coming before the board tonight in hopes of suggesting that the vacancy be filled until the next town election. I would like to steal a moment to say a public thank you to Jack. He was a member of our committee for about 12 years, but he was a member of this community for much, much longer. For 50 years, he and his wife Grace, who has since been deceased, gave their all to the town. Jack worked for WOSR setting up the radio station, including what had to be done there. A very capable man, a very business-oriented man. And all that showed in his care and custody of our community. I just wish the public to acknowledge that. We are suggesting that Mr. Harry Williams, gentleman beside me here, be appointed to fill the vacancy until this town election, I believe it's May. As you can see from the resume that we've provided you, Mr. Williams has a vast experience in public library and in several related fields, if I was unaware of. We have some decisions to be made on our board, and a full panel will be mostly helping. So we're asking for your consideration.
Excellent, excellent. Mr. Williams, would you like to say a few words?
Well, just that my professional career, from which I retired, involved 40 years in public libraries, and I was director of six city and town libraries over the years, five of them in the Commonwealth, and involved in library construction in pretty much every aspect of it, beginning in the town of Dudley, where I became the director when Tim Kelly was appointed here, and there was a vacancy to fill in Dudley. From that, basically, one librarian library to the city of Quincy, which was a large urban library. So I think I have some things to offer, just as a trustee, and I believe in boards working closely with the staff, and I think I can contribute. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Board members in our packets, we have Mr. Flynn's resignation, a memo, and a copy of the general bylaws from the town clerk regarding the process of filling the vacant position. We have a recommendation from Ms. McDougall in regards to Mr. Williams, and then, of course, we have Mr. Williams' resume. So, board members, does anyone have any questions or anything they'd like to pose to the trustees or to Mr. Williams?
No, I just want to say that I'm very impressed with the resume and the experience that this gentleman has had over the years. And as far as I'm concerned, he would be a welcome addition, not only to the library, to the community as a whole.
Agreed. Certainly seems like they found someone to do something huge.
I think they have.
Agreed.
I think they have.
Agreed. So, we will take a vote for you, but your Board of Trustees also needs to take a vote as well, correct? So, we will go first?
So, I move to appoint Harry, Dr. Williams, a third of our trustees Oxford Public Library, to fill a vacancy until the 2020 May town election.
Do I second?
I second that.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. So we have four in the affirmative, one abstent, and no abstentions. So would you like to proceed with your vote?
Thank you, it's a little awkward with only two members. But I believe the motion to be entertained would be to have Mr. Williams still the vacancy left by John Flynn.
So I agree.
That would be all, thank you. Let me be in favor.
Excellent. So let the record show that you are now appointed a trustee until the May 2020 election.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Love your tie. I do love the tie.
If I may, well, we're on the subject of libraries.
Yes.
I think it's only appropriate that we recognize the former trustee for his service over the years. I know he also worked as an election worker as well, as other positions that he has had over the years. I think it's only fitting that we send him a letter thanking him for his many years of service to the community.
I agree. From the board?
Yeah.
I agree. Would you like a proclamation or a letter?
I think both would be an honor.
Excellent, that's very good. Jordan, can you make that note, and we will go ahead and do that?
Thank you very much.
Excellent, very much. Thank you so much.
Your consideration.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
As we move on to the next item, I would like to just make a note for, I should have mentioned this in the beginning, we are taping this meeting, none of our microphones are actually working. Everything that is being picked up is through the microphones that are on the cameras posted around the room. So just a note to people who are coming up, if we could speak just slightly louder than normal, that would be great, so that everything is absolutely recorded as much as possible. All right, for our second item on the agenda, we have Dr. Daniel R. Champagne, zoning board of appeals appointment. Dr. Champagne? You're welcome. Thank you, Dr. Champagne. I understand you volunteered yourself up to the zoning board of appeals?
That's correct.
That is correct, excellent. Would you like to tell us a little bit about yourself?
Well, I grew up in Oxford, graduated in class of many decades ago. Left the town, I returned about seven years ago. I always feel it's kind of our duty to get back to the town with what we can. So I saw this opportunity and thought it would be, I'd be a good fit for it.
Excellent, very good, very good. Board members, anyone have any questions or comments for Dr. Champagne?
Madam Chair, one of the reasons why I wanted to also forward Daniel's request up the chain, I think the zoning board of appeals is a very unique board, and I think if you look at Dr. Champagne's background, you will see that his PhD is in management leadership and organizational change. And I know one thing, the Board of Appeals needs people who really look at the specifics of our bylaws, particularly our zoning bylaws. So we appreciate you stepping forward.
Well, thank you.
And I did have a very enjoyable conversation in advance of this. And of course, Sarah Champagne is an appointment I made on the cultural council, so we have it all hopefully expanded to the family. So we appreciate you stepping forward.
Thank you.
Excellent. And again, very important board for this town, and so thank you. So if we may, have a motion?
I move to appoint Dr. Daniel R. Champagne Jr. as an associate member of the Board of Appeals in the town of Oxford until the annual town election in May of 2023.
Do I second you?
I second that motion.
Excellent, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. So four in the affirmative, one absent, no abstentions.
Good luck.
Thank you very much, sorry.
Well, I appreciate your time coming.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
We do have a public hearing, but it doesn't start until 7:15, so I'd like to wait until 7:15 to start that. Madam Town Manager, do you have a couple of items on your report that maybe we could fill in here for a few minutes?
Sure. I think we could start off with minutes for November 19th. All selectmen were present for that, and I'd be looking for an approval of those minutes as they are written.
Excellent. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
I move to approve the meeting minutes of November 19th, to be approved as written.
Excellent. Do I have a second?
I second that.
All in favor? Yes.
Yes.
And I vote yes, so we have four in the affirmative, one absent, no abstentions.
The next item on the report is the minutes for January 7th. Again, I would be asking for approval of those minutes, all selectmen, nope, selectmen sad was not here at that particular meeting.
Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
I move the meeting minutes of January 7, 2019, to be approved as written.
I second that motion.
Excellent. All in favor? Yes.
Yes, I'm staying.
And I vote yes as well. So we have three in the affirmative, one abstention, and one absent.
Terrific. The next item on the report is the presidential primary warrant. It is fast approaching, the presidential primaries on March 3, 2020. We'd be asking the board this evening to actually vote to sign the presidential primary warrant so that we can post it. Of course, voting would be taking place from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM at the Jaffe Elementary School and Oxford Middle Schools. And I would say that at this point in time, if we can have a vote to actually vote to sign the presidential primary warrant, we'll post it.
Excellent. Do I have a motion?
Move the board vote to sign the presidential primary warrant for March 3, 2020. Do I have a second?
I second that motion.
All in favor? Yes.
Yes.
And I vote yes, four in the affirmative, one absent.
Terrific. The next item on the report is election workers. It's going to be a busy year because it is a presidential election. Our town clerk Lori Kelly has requested that the board appoint the following residents. Initially, she had forwarded four names, but as you can see, we have five. One is Julie Krantz for Precinct 2, Earl Scan for Precinct 3, Susan Gustafson for Precinct 4, Carolyn Morrison for Precinct 4 as well, and then William Sullivan for Precinct 2.
Excellent. Do I have a motion to approve of, move that Julie Krantz, Earl Scan, Susan Gustafson, Carolyn Morrison, and William Sullivan be appointed as election workers?
I second that.
Excellent. All those in favor? Yes.
Yes.
And I vote yes, four in the affirmative, one absent.
The next item is the police chief employment agreement. You'll find a memo that is in your packets in which I had recently had Police Chief Anthony Sad give me official notice that he wanted the board to be apprised of the fact that his employment agreement will be expiring on June 30, 2020. He's indicated his desire to begin negotiating new terms, which is a positive sign. I know that he has put out a potential change in negotiations if the board would like to meet in advance, have him meet with me in advance as the town manager to work on some major priorities for him, and then have him meet with the board, or would you rather have your own meeting, of course, an executive session with him and do the whole thing? So it's up to you. In the past, with his first appointment, the whole board did the whole agreement. And I think the agreement has some solid terms in it already. There might be a few things that I could forward to the board if I met with him in advance, but it's up to you. So tonight, he would like at least some understanding of which direction you'd like to go, and however you make that motion, it's fine with me one way or the other.
Board members, any discussion?
I think it's appropriate that he works with the town manager and that we meet afterwards.
I agree. I think in light of our busy schedules, it might be easier for the two of them to kind of pile out first, and then as a board, we can then coordinate our schedules to meet with him after.
Selectmen's out?
Yeah. I have a phone on the.
And he didn't, he didn't have a preference?
I think he thinks that, he told me that he would feel very comfortable going over some specific details and then meeting with the board about that. And maybe we can write that framework out and maybe just wrestle with, you know, the items that seem to be of real importance to you, and I would share those in advance through confidential memo.
No, no, go ahead.
No, I think it's a good idea that, you know, there's any loose ends that can be taken care of before we have a meeting and decide the whole thing at one meeting. It would be best that they do get together and we can meet in executive session with the manager to go over the specifics, and then add the chief in.
I agree. It's a second, it's a second contract, it's not a first contract, so.
It shouldn't be many changes to it, I wouldn't think.
Agreed, okay. All right, do I have a motion?
I move that the board direct the town manager Callahan to assist in negotiating with Chiefs at prior to meeting with the board.
I second that.
All those in favor? Yes.
Yes.
And I vote yes, so four in the affirmative and one absent. Terrific, thank you, Director. Thank you, Madam Town Manager. We are now going to go to the 7:15 item on the agenda, Haas Inc., Class II Violation Hearing. The, we do have, there was violation on January 9th of 2020, we had sent a letter to Mr. James Hadley at Haas Inc., 6 Boulder Parkway in North Oxford, asking him to attend this hearing scheduled for January 28, 2020. And the letter reads, please be advised that at their meeting of January 7, 2020, the Oxford Board of Selectmen voted to hold a violation hearing concerning your Class II license in the town of Oxford, which is located at 6 Boulder Parkway. This hearing was scheduled due to a violation of your license following an inspection of your establishment by the Oxford Police Department on December 13 of 2019. You are required to attend this hearing, which will be held tonight, Tuesday, January 28, at 7:15, in the selectmen's meeting room on the second floor, and you have the right to have counsel present at this hearing. If you have any questions, please don't hesitate. The letter was signed by Emily Haran, administrative assistant for the Oxford Board of Selectmen. Anyone who wishes to speak at this hearing, is there, first of all, is there anyone here who does wish to speak at this hearing other than Mr. Hadley? Officer Ossman, will you be speaking?
I'm present, ma'am, if you need a testimony.
Excellent, thank you. I'm going to ask you, Mr. Hadley, if you can raise your right hand to be sworn in. Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
Excellent, thank you. Mr. Officer Ossman, if you'd like to come up, please, if you'd like to speak at the microphone, introduce yourself for the record, and then you can either read your personal narrative, or give the board a summary of the violation, whichever one you prefer.
Good evening. I'm Officer Daniel Ossman, the Oxford Police Department. I conduct by seasonal inspections of the art dealer license in town. There's approximately, as of now, 27 licenses that the town has issued this year, starting at my first inspection, which was on April 30, 2019. I conducted my inspection at Haas Incorporated, located at 6 Boulder Parkway. I did observe at the time that there were 21 vehicles present on site. There is a restriction on the license to three automobiles in running condition to be located at that site plan. I did speak with the general manager, identified as Mr. Hussain. I informed him that he was operating under the scope of his license, and I informed that he need to take current action with the town of Oxford. I directed him to contact the town hall. At that point, I believe someone from Haas Incorporated, a representative, did come into the town hall and speak with someone. I did follow up on Mr. Crandall afterward, but I believe nothing came to fruition after that. When I conducted my second inspection of the year, which was December 13, 2019, there were 16 vehicles on the site. I once again had the same conversation with Mr. Hussain and informed him that he needed to take immediate action with the town, and directed him to contact the town hall.
Thank you very much. Okay, Mr. Hadley, would you like to state your case or your position on this and offer any rebuttal to that?
Since the last inspection, I have contacted Quinn Engineering and we have additional revised plot plan showing additional such slots. And I'm the one that came to the town hall to find out what I needed to do to.
Okay. So is that something you would like us to have entered into the record? Yes, please.
I see.
Oh, thank you so much. Do you need a copy for yourself?
No, that's fine.
So, Mr. Hadley, what you're, what you're saying here is that you have been working with an engineer to obtain additional parking spaces?
Yes, additional space became available for.
Okay. When did that space become available?
I believe in May.
Of last year?
Of last year.
Okay. And if you don't mind me asking, who is Mr. Hussain in relation to you?
He's my manager.
So he's your manager, and you're the owner?
Yes, correct.
And have you been anywhere else, other than when you came back into the town hall to speak with Ms. Crandall afterwards? Have you been to the planning board, zoning board, anything along those lines?
No, I've been waiting for Quinn Engineering to.
All right, excellent. Yes, if I'm going to turn it over to questions to the board members?
Sorry, I just sounded kind of going off of that. So while I completely respect that you've gotten an engineering plan, what about the fact that you are grossly over the amount of vehicles that are on your apartment? Have you done anything to mitigate that problem while you're working on your engineering?
I've not had as many vehicles on, a lot of them are there to be detailed, and then they go off to another auction to be wholesaled. So it's, the 20 vehicles on lot are not for sale, per se. They're there to be detailed and then to be wholesaled.
Are there still greater than three vehicles there?
Yes.
Okay.
Selectmen's out?
Yeah. Your license calls for three.
Correct.
Why would you have that many over your allotted amount?
I dropped the ball. I should have gone to the planning board and shown the additional spaces that were made available.
Now, you're in violation of your original license, and you're here expecting the board to increase the number of vehicles to your license, is that correct?
I, yes.
Doesn't make sense to me.
Yeah, I dropped the ball.
Yeah. I'm not inclined to increase the license at this point, Madam Chair. I would think it would be an order to, to issue a, not a suspension at this point, but a severe warning, and then we can look at this when this license comes up next year.
Is that a motion?
It is a motion.
Yes, we can't make a motion, I can close the hearing. So if we could.
All right, and then I will.
Resign?
I will rescind that, and I thought, I would like to modify it anyway, so.
No problem.
Thank you.
While we keep it in the discussion stage, anyone else have any other questions? Clarification, Selectmen's out?
I just really can't wrap my head around the fact that April you were given a verbal warning. You came to the town hall once, and then, meh, whatever, and then you clearly kept the vehicles there because in December, you still had 13 more than you were supposed to have. I mean, that is a blatant disregard for authority, for the officer who tried to give you a shot to fix it, and then you come in here tonight and say, hey, well, you know, yeah, I dropped the ball, but instead of punishing me, give me more space. I have a really hard time with that lack of respect, because you were given a license, and instead of being appreciative of the three and working towards getting more and getting the approval for more, instead it's, yeah, I messed up, but it is a big deal. And I think that what we do tonight kind of goes towards setting a precedence of how much we're actually going to enforce these licenses that we allow. There's a lot of people that want to do business in Oxford, and I'm grateful that you want to do business here. However, to have a blatant disregard is something that doesn't sit well with me.
Thank you. Mr. Hadley, I have a couple of questions if you don't mind. So, the license calls for three vehicles, correct? And I just want to make sure that I understand this. So back in April, there were 21 vehicles with a maximum of three. And then when Officer Ossman went back on the 13th of December, there were 16 vehicles, so there were five less vehicles, but they were less, but they were still over the allotted amount. How many vehicles are there today, please, at your close of business today?
For sale? 11.
There's 11 for sale?
Yep.
Now, you did mention that you, there are some vehicles that are there more temporarily, correct? They're detailed, and then they move forward.
Correct.
Okay. So the question that I have is, has your business grown so much that you've outgrown this facility?
No, no. The access vehicles that are there are there to say, to be able to retail the vehicles.
Yes.
They're there to be cleaned up and shuffled off to another auction.
Okay.
So it's more of a temporary holding yard.
I understand. And if you don't mind, tell us about the, in that particular area, there is now more space opened that you are working on, correct?
That's correct.
And of that space, how many, how many more parking spots does that allow?
11.
So you'll have a total of 11, or you'll have a total of 14?
Total of 14.
You'll have a total of 14. Which I believe requires an amendment to, the license will need to be changed, correct? Because currently, you only have a license for three.
Correct.
And were you planning on coming in front of the board at the end of the year? Now, now, understand that you've done your surveys and whatnot, that you are aware that you still need to go through the process of mending your license and so on and so forth. And do you have counsel at all, or are you doing this on your own?
No, I don't.
Okay. All right, fair enough. All right. Fair enough. I will make a motion to close this public hearing, unless anyone else has any discussion?
Oh, excuse me. Madam Town Manager? I do, I do have one thing to ask. So you've had your engineer design a new site plan, but you haven't actually shared that with the planning board yet.
Correct, I just received this Monday.
Okay. So that would be one of the things I think this board should be cognizant of, that we do have businesses, and sometimes they're restricted with the number of vehicles, not just because they're pursuing an auto, you know, license. And so I would recommend that despite being shown a plan that an engineer has put together for them, I do think the planning board should look at that and then be able to give that feedback to the board as you entertain any adjustments to the license. But that's what I think would be in order as well.
Okay, excellent. And there's a follow-up question to that, Mr. Hadley. Granted, you've had the survey done to do this, do you have permission to take over those additional spots, or is that something else that will need to be negotiated?
I have permission.
Do you have permission?
From the board.
Would you, from the owner?
Yep.
Okay. So, okay, very good. If no further, any further?
I do, I do have a question.
Selectmen's out?
You mentioned the fact that you were doing detailing on vehicles?
Correct.
When you applied for your license, did you mention that to the board that you were doing that?
I had a garage back then, so most likely, yes.
At that location?
When I say detail, I don't mean anything with water, I mean just the insides of vehicles, vacuum out, clean the windows, that type.
So these vehicles that are there, that you do this, are registered vehicles, private owners?
Absolutely not.
What are they?
They're, two other vehicles.
So you take on other dealers' vehicles?
No, my own. They're my dealerships. They're not registered to anybody else. They're bought under Haas Incorporated, under that dealer's license. There's no registered vehicles, we don't do any detailing to the public or anything like that.
So those vehicles that are, that are there, that you're doing work on to get them ready for resale, are your vehicles?
Yes.
Okay. I just don't understand why, if you're in that line of business, you wouldn't have come in for more vehicles than three at the time, and you wouldn't have been in this mess that you're in.
Yeah, like I said, they're, they're not there for retail, they're there for wholesale, the vehicles. So it's more of a holding yard for a week or two. So it's more of a holding yard for a week or two. But I know I dropped the ball, so I did.
What you're explaining to me is still in violation
Yes.
of the code of the law. Because there are auctions, we have one here in town.
Correct.
And they deal with vehicles. They're not their vehicles, but these vehicles are not, do not have a registration on them. They have a dealer's plate for each vehicle that they work with. How long have you been in business?
10 years.
10 years. Well, I would think that you would have a better understanding of that section of the law. So at this point, um, I have nothing more to say.
Okay, excellent. Any other discussion? Madam Town Manager, your discussion purposes.
I do think that knowing that you're doing detailing work, that could also enter into, you know, further, not investigation, but assessment by our Board of Health, believe it or not. There are issues that relate to runoff and the like.
There's no water being used. It's just cleaning the windshields, vacuuming the cars out.
I think it would still be helpful if you're meeting with our Land Management Office to ask if there's anything when you're detailing, just so that you can be compliant in that regard. Because there have been a lot more regulations that have come into effect. Because it seemed like such a benign thing when you're doing detailing, but with some detailers, it goes far in advance of just vacuuming inside, so.
Excellent. So no further discussion? I will, um, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I move to close a violation hearing for the Hass Incorporated.
Do I second?
I second that.
All in favor? Yes.
Yes, yes.
And I vote yes, so four in the affirmative, one absent. Okay. Do, so I would entertain a motion at this point to determine whether or not Mr. Hadley with Hassi has definitively exceeded the maximum number of vehicles allowed by the license.
I would make a motion to find Hass Incorporated in violation of exceeding the maximum number of vehicles allowed by their license.
I second that motion.
Discussion?
Yes.
Yes, sir. A select one side.
Yes, uh, no, I'm gonna vote for it and then I'd like to put a motion on.
Fair enough. So, um, no further discussion on that motion. Do I have a vote, please?
Yes.
Yes.
I'd like to place a motion on the floor.
Well, we're gonna vote first to confirm that he, that they are out of, no, that's correct. That they're out of compliance with the license.
I vote yes.
Yes, 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 yes. So four in the affirmative, one absent. Very well. Select one side, would you like to make a motion in regards to how we handle this violation?
Yes, I would. In light of the violation, I would make a motion that we issue a written warning and be part of the record and that we not be able to expand the number of vehicles until this current license expires. And I would be willing to listen to any amendments anyone may have. If you think that the period of time is too long, you want to shorten it, I'm open to that as well.
So just to be clear, we have a motion on the floor?
Yes.
That.
But somebody can amend it if they want.
Yeah, I have to second it before I amend it?
Yes.
Alright, so I'll second it. Very good.
Sorry.
That's okay. And for discussion purposes, I just want to clarify that we understand that your motion is on the floor to hold him to his license of three vehicles until.
The license expires and then he can apply for a new license with additional vehicles.
And select one side, that's what you've said?
Yes.
Okay. So we have a motion, we have a, on, we have a motion, we have a second. We're in discussion phase. Select one side, would you like to, have you have anything that you wish to discuss?
So I just have a question because I.
We're in discussion phase?
Yes, because I have a problem with the warning part of it because he clearly doesn't care about warnings. Because today he still has 11 vehicles on the lot for sale and I'm sure that there are other vehicles there as well that are in holding, which as far as I'm concerned, they're owned by a company and I'm willing to bet that if someone came in tomorrow and said they wanted to buy one of the ones that wasn't detailed, the answer wouldn't be no. My question is, would it be, would you consider amending the motion to say that the vehicles with the written warning, it's under the understanding that the vehicles above three are removed from the property by a certain date?
Yes.
And if not, we can revisit this to suspend or revoke the license?
Yep, I would, I would suggest 30 days would be more than enough time for him to get rid of those vehicles.
Okay.
So.
I would, I would accept.
You, you.
Okay, so I would amend the motion then to say that we will give a written warning with the understanding that any vehicle above number three needs to be removed from the property no later than 30 days from today. And if the vehicles are not removed, then we will revisit the issue.
At that point, is license could possibly be revoked if he doesn't comply?
I second that motion.
Okay.
The second amendment.
The second amendment, okay, great. I'm gonna go into discussion one more time, very quickly. I would just like to say that, um, Mr. Hadley, clearly you are in violation of your license. I don't think, I think that's a problem. But, and I, and I do want to, for discussion purposes, I can't infer intention in terms of, you know, what you did, how you did it, and what you thought, and all of those things. I want to just deal very factually with the fact that you have too many cars on your lot. It's beyond the license that the town has issued. You've been warned. It didn't work, so now we have to move to this type of action. And we, I have a feeling that this will probably be what is approved with the motion that's on the floor. And we would really like you to rectify it and so that we can move beyond this and keep you as a valued partner within the town. Right, in so far, so. So that I will close discussion unless anyone has anything else. We have a motion, we have a second, we have discussion. Discussion's finished, let's have a vote, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
And I vote yes as well. So we form the affirmative, one absent, and one standing. Mr. Hadley, thank you for coming in and sorting this out. It is 7:38 and we're only, I'm going to ask the Aquarian contingent to come up to the front table. And we have a water company update. Thank you, Steve Paul Morgan. Your phone's still, are you posting?
I'm still posting.
No, so.
You know, and John. We knew that. Okay, we knew that. Alright, folks, you got 15 minutes. What do you need, what do you want to tell us?
I want to thank the board for inviting us.
We're happy to have you.
I am Director of Operations, with you Paul. Plus the Manager of Operations, behind you John Wallace, Vice President of Operations. And we're happy to be here. We hope this can be a regular occurrence at your request and at your frequency. So I prepared a presentation. I believe you have a high copy and.
Yes, sir.
Successfully have put the conference on board.
Yes, Section D.
And I do have some high copies up here of John, if anyone in the audience would like them. So what we'd like to talk about is just giving you an overview of the system, in case you have anybody with a water system in Oxford. You want to review the projects we've done in 2019. I thought you brought up investment plan for 2020. And then Paul's gonna talk about some operational highlights, I think we've done in 19 and ended in 2020. And also talk about our involvement in the community. Alright, so this slide here is a rudimentary diagram of the water system in words and a few blocks. So we have our four wells off to the left. The North Main Street Wells, there's three of them there. It was well pumped and treated on-site at a facility. For treatment, we disinfect with chlorine, we adjust the pH with potassium nitric oxide. We had phosphates for corrosion control, we had fluoride for fluoridation. We have the same treatment at our other supply, the Nelson Street, well number three, off Nelson Street. So that water that we pump out of the ground and treat, we pump into the distribution system. The distribution system is a network of pipes. They're underground. If you see a phi hydrant, you know there's a pipe nearby. Alright, so that network of pipes is also connected to storage tanks. We have three storage tanks, the Geric Tank, the Prospect Hill Tank, and the Sutton Ave Tank. And then all that water is pumped into another boosted zone by the Sutton Ave Pump Station to Joe Jenny Road for, for consumption. The distribution system is made up of about 41 miles of pipe, about 607 valves, almost 200 hydrants, and about 2,600, six, good question. The next slide is a schematic or a map of the distribution system. I know it's hard to see. It's basically a map of the town showing the roadways. Colored lines are the pipes in the ground. The different colors mean the different sizes of the pipes. Up to the north, we have the Geric Tank, and we have the Prospect Hill Tank. You'll see that the corridor of the distribution system is Main Street Route 12. The North Main Street well field is up to the north. Then by the interchange of 395 up to the right there at Sutton Ave, the Sutton Ave Tank and the Sutton Ave Pump Station. And then all the way to the south, we have the Nelson Street well number three. So what have we done recently in 2019? One of our major projects is a multi-year project, looking at options to deal with the manganese, elevated manganese levels on North Main Street well field. We're looking at two tracks. One track is looking for a demented replacement source, a source that had lower levels of manganese, and the other track is a treatment track. So continue to use that source, but treat it and remove the manganese. Alright? And what we did in 2019, we did some exploratory drilling, a couple of sites throughout town. We found one site with decent withdrawal capacity. And we're gonna advance that further in 2020. I'll get some information on that. And we also did a pilot study. So we had a small-scale treatment system. We brought it to the site. There's a photograph on the lower left of four columns, those are filter columns. And we demonstrated to the DEP that we could successfully treat and remove the manganese. That treatment system is called green sand filtration. Typical treatment method with a lot of success in other parts of the state. So that was, those are the kind of biggest project that, you know, that's gonna be multiple years, which in the end, you know, two or three years will result in either a new well, which is large expense, indoor treatment facility, which is a lot of expense. We also installed some new level transmitters at all of our wells so that now we can monitor what the water level is in these wells and better optimize and operate those wells. We updated some of the chemical feed pumps at our treatment facilities. And we added some new water quality analyzers. So the analyzers, the pumps, the level transmitters provide information to our SCADA system so that we can see and observe the quality of the water and how much we're pumping and where the water level is from our computers at the office and also in the field or at home. So those are some of the investments we concluded, uh, completed in 2019. The next slide is some photos of the Sutton Ave Booster Station, which is another project. This was on the books under discussion for probably six or seven years. We replaced the two booster pumps, pumps one and two shown in the photo. And we also installed a high-flow pump. That high-flow pump can provide fire protection to the neighborhood. So we did a lot of work at that pump station. And after it was placed in service, we contacted the fire department and we conducted some training, just to demonstrate that the pumping station could produce some high flows. So we brought them up there, we opened up a couple of hydrants that are connected to the pump station and the fire department practiced some fire protection. So it was a great success. Everyone understands, you know, where the valves are, where the hydrants are. It was included mutual aid exercise. So having successfully completed some pretty significant important projects, we're looking for the future, you know, continued investment in the Oxford Water System. So as I mentioned previously, we're gonna continue the new source project. We're gonna look at drilling here a couple of more wells, a couple of additional sites to see if we can find something as economical as possible. And we're gonna do the next phase of treatment. We're gonna do a conceptual design. Conceptual design is taking the results of the pilot study and put some design factors on there so that we can estimate the costs. If we were to go to treatment, how much it would cost and where we would put it. And some further details to better shape that project. We're also planning to upgrade the Nelson Street well. That well was tested and approved by DEP for a larger withdrawal than we're actually pumping right now. So it's an infrastructure improvement that we can simply do to basically make that source more reliable. Another thing that we're planning on doing is a water maintenance placement project on Church Street. Depending on how we make out with the new source and the treatment, you know, with and the magnitude of those capital expenses, we might need to defer the watering project, but time will tell on that. It's something that we'd like to do, obviously. And another project we'd like to do is rehabilitate the Prospect Hill Tank. The portion that we would do in 2020 would be design, the rehabilitation or the upgrade of the tank. We would do the work, the construction work in 2021. So just take that first step of looking at the Prospect Hill Tank to improve it. Alright? So we want to do, and we plan on making again, some continued investments in the capital plan. So this next slide is about us being proactive with regulations and upcoming regulations. And just to throw a hand, has anyone heard of a compound, a group of compounds called PFAS? Okay, well, there's a movie out about it.
Oh, yeah.
One of those, you know, law movies, excuse me. So PFAS, a pure and polyfluorinated fluoralkyl substances. They've been around since the 40s. They're very common in a lot of consumer products. I've shown a few here, anything that's waterproof. Microwave popcorn, Teflon hands, that type of thing, has PFAS in it. So the EPA and the DPE, DEP, because one of the exposure pathways is drinking water, they started to prepare some health advisory levels. So in 2016, EPA did, they set a health advisory level of 70 for a group of five of these compounds. Later on, in 2018, DEP, oh, I'm sorry, EPA set a limit of 70 for two compounds. DEP added three, so it's a total of five compounds for 70. Just this past December, the DEP proposed a regulation, a drinking water standard of 20 pots per trillion. And actually, just this week, Monday, DEP came out with a new health advisory level of 20 pots per trillion for six compounds. Alright? And a pot per trillion, you know, what is a pot per trillion? It's approximately one drop of water in three Olympic sized swimming pools. So that's the level, that's how low the concentration is that it's been found harmful. So based on some of the concerns and public concerns with PFAS, we proactively went out and sampled our sources. So there's basically no requirement to do that, but we wanted to see how we're at, make sure we're protected by our customers. So we sampled our sources and what I'm showing down here in the table is the results. So you'll see that North Main Street had a concentration of two into a three pots per trillion. And then that was originally compared to the 70, that's now 20 pots per trillion. And our Nelson Street well had a concentration of five pots per trillion, and then again, they combined six compounds. So we're in very good shape with the quality of the water that we're producing. There's no, absolutely no risk. And, you know, we're very confident that we will continue to be able to beat and surpass, you know, state and federal drinking water standards. So now I'd like to turn it over to Paul to talk about some operational highlights.
So in 2019 and 2020, this is 2019, 2020, the, as you can see, the phi hydrants, the results that you get from the flushing. So the distribution system is flushed, the north end of Oxford, due to the iron and manganese issues we have there, is flushed every year, every April. We go from the north end of town all the way down to probably just past the wells on North Main Street. And this year here, we're gonna be flushing the entire system, starting in April and continue from there. And this year here, we're going to be flushing the entire system, starting in April, and continue from there. Then the leak detection survey is done in the spring, and as you can see, there was three service leaks and one hydrant that was leaking, that totaled thirty-one thousand six hundred and eighty gallons per day, which were all repaired, and the hydrant was repaired, so that saved all that amount of water. Then also, the hydrant maintenance is done two times a year. They're done in the spring and the fall, tested, flushed, and gone through, and then also winterized in the, before the winter. And a lot that goes out to the towns, the fire department, they let us know when they're using them, and what's going on there. So, the valve maintenance program, we do ten percent of the valves every year, the valves that are in the system are tested, make sure they're operational. That's another program that we run yearly. And also, the customer meters, any meters that are ten years old or older, they let us go out, and they change also due to the DEP regulations. And the large meters that we have that we don't change out, are tested yearly at the stations and at different locations. March and September, we do backflow testing and prevention, which is cross-connection, which is a good protection for the system. And then also, on the lower right-hand corner, you can see we also compete, and New England Oil Works has a competition at the TCU Center in April, and that was myself and Paul Drapow. We've done the competition a couple times, it was kind of a fun, we've demonstrated it at the cab meetings and stuff and everything, kind of a fun competition. So, we had a good time doing that, we're slated to do it again this year. And community relations and support. Last year, there was over eight thousand dollars in donations to the, in our time, in of our time, to the Oxford community organizations, including the athletic leagues, fire and police, Lions Club, Barton Center, Oxford School Systems, there are different events there with water. We provide water for the students and the kids, a couple events, and also, we installed three hydration stations last year. Customer conservation program, which is, has started back up again. We did some in 2017 and eighteen, and we had to start for 2019, due to funding, and now we have some more funds. So we've completed up till now twenty-three toilets, twenty-four showerheads, twenty faucets, washer rebate, and seventeen customers have been taken care of, so the cost of eleven thousand dollars, and then six hundred and fifty gallons per day savings in water for conservation. And next, the fire department, we scheduled a training with them. We have a new hydraulic model of the system with pressures and flows, and the location of the hydrants. So we scheduled two, two trainings with the fire department to go over the system, two different nights, and explain that with them, and then they'll be able to keep a copy of the map for their records. And the fire hydrant replacement, we usually do between one and two hydrants, depends on the cost of the hydrant and the location of it, but we coordinate that with the fire chief from the fire department, as to which of the whole hydrants we want to replace. And the, next, the facility tours for the selectmen, I believe I talked to Fran earlier. An email went out to, you know, invite the selectmen to go for a tour. Selectman Daniels toured with Franny and I recently, and just, he was interested in the system, so we took him around. So we think maybe, you know, in the springtime, when the weather gets a little better, that way we can see the outside stuff also. And then the town center beautification, I spoke with town manager Monday, and about donating some funds for plantings and flowers, and also told her that we'd help out with some labor and kind of needed to aquarium. So, there's some pictures of the donations that we've done. And then, on the last page, we got the Oxford customer advisory board meetings that we do. We do them in the spring and the fall, and a couple of the examples of what we do, we, you know, have the same presentation like we just gave you people. Then we also have a, like a show and tell, what we call a show and tell at the end. And the last couple of years, we've done, there's a model of a well field that we use to show how the water flows into the wells. The one underneath that is our cross-connection systems that we use in testing. And then recently, we did the water meters, where we showed the evolution of the water meter from the older days till now. We actually had it set up so you could flow water through and see the meters work and all that kind of stuff. So, it's a couple of neat things, we always do a presentation at the end of that, for the people and stuff, so. I think, other than that.
Yeah, so that's all we had prepared for presentation, and we want to thank you for the opportunity, and see if you have any questions for anything we presented, or if you didn't.
Board members, any questions? Okay, for me.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Yeah, thank you.
No, I just thought it was a very enlightening presentation. And I think this is a good idea, that you guys come in and.
And that was one thing I was going to mention, we like to do this, you know, twice a year, every six months, updates or something. Come in and give it, yeah.
We'll keep the town manager updated as needed.
It can be high graded, since I have to.
That's it, yeah.
Lead, but I was having a coughing fit, so I apologize for missing some of the presentations. But they have come to my office and given me also an update, and I thought it was important for the board also to hear that. And they did mention that they wanted to be a very strong participant this year in beautification efforts, since plants need water. I think that's an excellent idea, and maybe can, even though we have self-watering, you know, containers, maybe have some ideas how we can reduce the gallons used. I appreciate that.
Excellent. I would just like to say, and certainly, in this day and age, quality drinking water is, it's paramount. And there are, there are places in this country that struggle with that, whether it's municipality-owned, whether it's privately-owned. My expectation of aquarium is that you need to deliver safe drinking water to our residents, and be responsive when service levels are, or when services are needed. And my expectation about the quality of water is that it needs to be better, it needs to be better than what the government requires it. And I will admit, I think that you guys are doing great on all fronts, and please continue to do the good work. Nice to see you, John, again, Jonathan back there. Thanks for filling the audience, I very much appreciate it. So, if no one has anything else, please stay in touch. Thank you very much for coming in and taking your time.
Don't worry, I've got emergency preparedness.
Yeah, okay.
A few slides there. So, Madam Town Manager, we're going to go back to your, your list here, and I had to find it once before, I'm sure we'll have.
We're on number six.
Number six, civil service.
Civil service.
Thank you. So I'd like to inform the board that, once again, the Chiefs had met in my office recently, and we both recognized that the board had asked to be reminded about coming back to the table to discuss at some point whether we would be placing articles on the annual town meeting regarding both the town's potential removal of civil service within the police department, and making any corresponding charter amendments that would be required with that or not. So one of the things that I'd like to suggest to the board is that might take up some time, and we should have some candid conversations with the chief about that. And so I would suggest that we have an actual workshop on that. But I'd be open to however the board would like to think about doing that, and whether they want to actually have a discussion in a workshop environment, to decide what they will do at formal meeting going forward. Board members, any discussion?
Oh, Madam Selectman Triano.
Yes.
I'm not, I'm not following it, too.
Yes, yes she is.
I lose my voice, and all I want to do is talk to you.
Bunch of rotten clock drops, so I'd like to save it a bit.
So I, obviously, Selectman Sad and I have been on this. I think it would be a good idea to get the whole board involved, kind of cut out the middleman, we'll get to see if this might help us get on the same page and move in a forward direction in time for the next town meeting. So I personally think that this would be a good idea to kind of come together and roundtable the issue.
Where would you suggest we do this, Madam Chief?
We could do it at the police station.
Yeah.
You know, in the training room. And, did you say when or when?
Both, really.
Both, okay. I think that the sooner we try to do that, the better, and I can have the chairman send out, you know, a date, unless people want to look at that now. I think in the month of March, I would be, I think we'd be pushing it a little bit, but maybe towards.
I think we have to do this.
Mid-February or third week of February.
Within the next couple of weeks, really.
So why don't we try to shoot for maybe the third week of February, around there. Any preferred night that the board would like, obviously, an off night from one of our board meetings, but would you like it during the same week as a board meeting? Selectman Daniels, would you, are you, we know he's not, that's why I was talking to you later. Are you in agreement?
Yes, I am in agreement. I do, I would like to get together as a group and discuss this, and get us all on the same page.
How does, how do people feel about maybe doing it maybe an hour before the regular board meeting? Since we all have to be here anyway, would that pose any issues for anyone?
Well, this is, I don't really, but that's, would you want to do it?
Maybe the last week of February or next week.
Or we could do one, yeah, but you're not here next week.
I'm not here next week.
Oh, you're not here next week, so, okay.
If we did the third week of February, I don't think that's that, that's cool vacation week. On the twenty third. Vacation.
I don't know, do you think that's too late? I'm kind of thinking this should be, because I think the warrant will, won't the warrant close the thirty-fourth of March? Of March, yeah. And we have, you know, don't forget, we did bring an article just specific to, you know, civil service to the fall warrant. I think there was a lot of work that was done, I think then there was a diversion, divergent of views, and so it was prudent at that time, once we realized we also had the element of the charter provisions, and that was entering into it, we decided to remove it from consideration at that time. So I think there's a lot of work that has been done by both Selectman Sad and Selectman Triano. I think there were just some things that also materialized over time that may not have come up during our initial discussions with civil service. So, I think we can, I think in February, we'll be fine to be able to meet, you know, the end part, and gives us enough time to also, depending on which way the board entertains, you know, forward progression on this or not, we have plenty of time, I think, to also make sure that we provide the public with some education as well in the formal setting.
I noticed that according to the schedule of February, I think we meet the first week of February, and then we don't meet again until the last.
Right, because the president's week, right. Usually we don't have a meeting right after the holiday.
So, there's a big span there.
We could do it, you know, we could do it the following week. You're out till the ninth, Selectman Dan?
Correct.
You want to try like a Monday?
I can't do Mondays.
Okay.
Any day other than Monday, those two weeks is fine, but I can't make it on Monday.
Selectman Daniels, what's your schedule look like on the week of the ninth, you're back?
The week of the ninth?
Yes.
Looks like the eleventh and the thirteenth are great days, that's Tuesday, Thursday.
Okay.
That week, and then pretty much all of next week.
Selectman Triano, how's the eleventh look for you?
That's fine, Selectman Sad.
Is the eleventh of Tuesday, Tuesday is fine, the Thursday is not.
Okay, same here with me. So why don't we check with the chairman and see if the eleventh of February could work? With Tony initially. Okay, okay. Why don't we try that, and then?
Since that's not a regular meeting day, would we meet at the police station?
I would try to arrange that in that order. Okay, okay. So if you can, we'll see, let's see if that works for the chairman, and then. We'll find out. If not, we'll do a flurry of emails for a secondary date.
For the following week, I can do anything, like I said, except, actually, the following Monday would work, but that's president's day.
So the, right, town hall's closed, yeah, okay.
But any day that week is fine.
Okay.
Same as well.
Same here. Kind of worst comes to worst will, except the, the last meeting, did you do that? Okay, okay. All right, excellent, I'd like to give you some guidance. It did. Okay, perfect. Uh, do you want a motion for that, Madam Town Manager? Um, I think the motion would be that we, you know, do a workshop. I think he's looking for that guidance, and so with the department, but you're going to do that. Do you want to make that motion, Madam?
I move that we schedule to discuss civil service and potential changes to the town charter by way of a workshop.
I second the motion.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
For the affirmative, what else? Terrific, excellent, I'll inform the chief as well. The next item has to do with the annual Operation Santa Five K Road Race. The board is in receipt of a request from dispatcher Brittany Morgan, who is hosting the annual Operation Santa Five K Road Race. The event will take place Sunday, I know we do this many months in advance, May seventeenth, twenty twenty at nine AM. The race has already been approved by Chief Sad and Chief McDonald. And they are looking for your approval as well.
I move to approve the annual Operation Santa Five K Road Race proposal for May seventeenth at nine AM.
Second.
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes, for the affirmative, what else? Terrific, and the next item has to do with the Community Center Feasibility Study Committee. I just wanted to let you know that I've been working with Sean Dybal. We're in the process of actually putting an RFP together. We did have an appropriation at last town meeting for fifty thousand dollars. We are looking for other members of this Community Center Feasibility Study Committee. So, we had a call today of somebody who has been forwarded to us, so we're excited, was putting together, I think, a good team. I also wanted to alert anybody, if they are interested, is to contact the town administrator's office, or go through one of our selectmen, because that's how I get forwarded things, so I appreciate that. But I will also share the RFP once we're done. Again, we're looking for not just a rehab of the community center, we're looking for some really bold ideas of what that building can be, and how we can approach it. So if you have any input before we go and put together the final touches on our RFP, please let me know. And I didn't remember hearing, that's right, I had two calls today, so, on this. So, I did ask the board for a member the last time, and everybody was, at that point in time, had a lot on their plate and didn't know enough about that particular item. So, I know Selectman Daniels has come to my office and talked with me about it, and is willing to serve, which I'm fairly grateful. So, I was hoping that maybe the board of selectmen would nominate him to serve on that committee.
I move that Selectman Daniels be approved, representative board of Selectman, as a member of the Community Center Feasibility Study Committee.
Second motion.
Any discussion? All in favor? Yes.
Yes, yes.
And I vote yes for the affirmative, what else? Thank you, Selectman Daniels. You're welcome aboard. The next item has to do with the Route Twenty Reconstruction Public Informational Meeting. As I've reported to you in the past, both Sean Dybal, both chiefs, myself, our deputy chief, we've all been working with the Mass DOT on this major infrastructure project that is the reconstruction of Route Twenty, basically from the Auburn border all the way to Charlton. We've had a number of meetings with DOT, we've been refining the overall project scope. We've made a lot of headway in trying to address our public safety needs with a reconstruction project. This is, initially was looked at as being as upwards of a seventy million dollar reconstruction project. They've done some value engineering, and it's more between, you know, fifty and sixty million at this point. But there is an informational meeting at the Oxford High School, and residents from both Charlton and Oxford will be invited, and they will actually receive information that evening, which is tomorrow at seven PM to nine PM. And it will be showing them the designs, and also talking about the timetable of which the construction project will take place. This is not something that our community is fronting the money for, it is something that the state has put aside as one of their major infrastructure projects, but it's very important for residents to give their input. So, I encourage the residents and any board members to be attending, I think it'll be great and eye-opening. The next item has to do with Central Mass Regional Planning. Their fiscal year 2021, they do have their assessment scheduled that they've forwarded to the board, and just letting us know that as we're going through and doing our budget planning, that the scheduled assessment for our community is going up two point five percent, and that basically means an additional ninety-eight dollars and fifteen cents to our overall assessment. I also want to let the board know that the governor just last week finally filed his budget recommendations, and although this is the beginning of the budget process, the initial recommendations for unrestricted funding, which is very important to us, as well as Chapter Seventy funding, were going up, not hugely, but forty-nine thousand six hundred and fifty in the Chapter Seventy area in unrestricted government funding, above sixty-one thousand. But those will get refined and hopefully on the way upwards. I also wanted to let you know that the CMMPO, which actually is the Central Mass Metropolitan Planning Organization, is actually having a meeting on February fifth. is actually having a meeting on February fifth that is going to actually address amendments to the, the T I P program, which actually has our Oxford Senior Van, which was recently given to us as, in the form of a grant. But the actual amount gets appropriated through that particular organization, which I know our chairman is a fervent attendee. So we're going to remind him when he comes back from being out of state that we're going to need him there for that night to make that amendment. The next item is really kind of, I think, timely. And that has to do with the fact that we just had on January eleventh on a Saturday, we had about, I want to say about seventy people come together for an emergency preparedness drill that the Oxford Board of Health had put together along with collaboration with our fire, police, school departments, manager's office. This is a, I want to say, this is like the third actual community-wide meeting. Initially, we had gone over actual plans on how we would actually do a huge drill, whether it's for inoculations or a mass outbreak. And looking at what's happening in the world with the coronavirus at this point in time, I just wanted you to know that our citizens and a couple of other organizations, including the medical reserves, volunteers came together and we were at the Oxford High School and we went through an entire incident training related to, at that point in time, a vetitis outbreak and what we would have to do and how we would do it. And everyone really worked and rose to the occasion. And at that particular time, Captain Sellers was there, Lieutenant Marsalonas was there, and of course, our great and dedicated board of public health that oversees our board of health activities. Carrie Single was terrific in managing the whole thing, as well as Lorraine Gilbert, who's in our board of health department. These things are not easy and the state is asking people to be prepared for anything. And so whether it's a mass inoculation or it's a way of trying to address a quarantine issue or anything else, I feel really pleased to be able to report to the board that we really have made, I think, some incredible progress. And not just with communication, but with pulling people together. And we will do more of this going forward. But I think it's important that you know that we are taking those steps and that the public, you know, should be confident that people are trying to prepare for any and all kinds of emergencies. The next item is just to inform the community that our Oxford Community Center is now offering the ten-week baseball hitting and fielding clinic for ages six through thirteen on Saturdays and Sundays. And this is going to take place beginning on January twenty-fifth, which is just already happened, all the way to March twenty-ninth. But you can sign up. And there's also a new sculpture program for young people, fifth graders to eighth graders, on Monday afternoons. And that will be actually at our Carbondco Beach also. So that's a good thing and a good way to use that. And those will, that particular course will be taking place January twenty-seventh through February twenty-fourth. I also want to let you know we're going to be working with our employees more fervently about employee wellness and health. And we are offering our first chiropractic health center free spinal screenings for employees. And that'll take place here at the town hall. And that, we're going to be offering that from eleven to two PM on Wednesday, which is tomorrow. I am somebody who's going to have that happen. So we're encouraging everyone, whether they work a lot with their backs or not, it's a good thing to have. And then hopefully, this will be sort of a, a normal, regular occurrence that we will do some things and bring them into the employees who typically find it difficult to go out and, and take advantage of a lot of employee wellness programming that might be out there. The other thing is earlier, you had voted to sign the presidential primary warrant. And I just wanted to also let you know that our town clerk has notified the public that the last date to register for the presidential primaries, actually Wednesday, February twelfth, from nine AM until eight PM, they can, residents can come and vote or alter their registration by going to clerk's office, sending a mail-in voter registration form to the clerk's office or by completing on the online voter system at the Secretary of State's website. It's unbelievable that it's happening that quickly. And finally, once again, as we try to drum up people to apply for the Hannah Harwood Scholarship, once again, it's a thousand dollar scholarship that's awarded annually. And the, the selectman's office is in charge of that. And you can apply for that through the selectman's office and the deadline is April first. So please step forward for any students interested in medical or allied health. And that would conclude my report for the board.
Thank you, Madam Town Manager. Now we're going to move to selectmen's requests. We cannot take any votes on anything, but if you have something you'd like to be placed on a future agenda, left the town manager office to know. So we will start with Selectman Triano.
The only thing that I have is that I had the pleasure of representing the board at the high school's Roxy Military Ball. And I just wanted to tip my hat to them. They really put on a great ball. They really should be proud of themselves for the hard work that they do. It was very well done, it was very elegant, they had a great time. So I was very happy to be there. It's the second year that I've gone and I look forward to hopefully going again next year. Recommended, it was a great event and they were very happy to be able to present it, so. So.
Selectman Daniels?
I have nothing tonight. I have nothing tonight.
You have nothing tonight? I have a list. Y'all, I'm going to take your time, okay? Okay, actually, just a handful of things. First of all, I want to encourage anyone and everyone to go to the public meeting tomorrow night in regards to Route Twenty. We, as a community, you know, thankfully just finished the Charlton Street project. There were a lot of, it was long, there was some speed bumps, there was some bumps in the road, no pun intended, so on and so forth. This meeting tomorrow evening is your opportunity to go and understand how your commute and your driving around Route Twenty is going to be impacted and for how long. So I highly recommend people going to attend. Second thing I had, and Madam Town Manager, I, I meant to call the office about this earlier and I don't mean to put you on the spot. So if you could get back to us. The Historical Commission was supposed to meet this month in regards to the Sacre Apres Bridge project. And I was wondering if that actually had happened. And if it did happen, what the outcome was. And if you don't know that, that's okay, because that was my fault for not asking earlier.
I do, I do know. And what I'll do is I'll forward the comments that I've gotten through our D P W director. But as far as I know, that they had looked at the new design of that. And from what I understand, they were understanding even with the way that the design was put together, that they acknowledged that they were more supportive going forward of that. So I know that Sean had put that together and, but I will send you also.
That would be great, Angela. Excellent, thank you, thank you. I'm actually, I was also very glad to hear about the emergency preparedness drill. And I strongly encourage those moving forward in any way, shape or form, you never know what's going to happen. And it's, you just, unfortunately, in this day and age, you need to be very prepared. So I'm, I'm glad that the town is doing that. I do want to mention the free spinal screenings for the chiropractors. I believe we're all technically employees as well. So if anyone would like to attend, just want to.
Come on in.
Yeah, make sure that you can do that. And Hannah Harwood Scholarship, I was going to mention that as well. It is a thousand dollar scholarship. I know people don't think that it's very much, but it's two semesters of books, if not more. And we're about to embark on a very large project on Harwood Street, which was officially named after the Hannah the Harwoods from many, many moons ago. So please put in your applications as soon as you can. And that's it, that's all we have. All right, anyone else? Nothing? All right, so it's about eight twenty, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second motion.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
And I vote yes, so.